Okay, Kyle. Good morning. How are we doing, everybody? Seven o'clock. We're going to start the meeting.
The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda, public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you. Just to let everybody know, tonight we have a public hearing for application for funding under the Restore New York Communities Initiative grant. And this is for May 13th, 2024 meeting. And this is for a grant that we're applying for, for Locust Grove of $1.5 million to restore barns/houses next to their business establishment right now. I will get to the public hearing and I will take comments, but first, we're going to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who sacrificed their lives to give us this opportunity to serve our country and to serve our town.
Thank you. And of course, right on cue, our wireless screen goes out. But as I'm restoring our wireless screen, we are in a public hearing. So if anybody wants to come up and voice their public comments about the Restore New York grant on the quick property, this is the time they could come up and make comments. Thank you. Anybody? Mickey, come on up. Yeah.
Mickey Simonovsky Marlborough. I'm not totally aware of all the ifs, ands, and buts that are needed. However, I am definitely in favor of doing anything that would help protect our historical heritage. And the Kent family is deserving of this grant, so I speak in favor of it.
Thank you.
So what we're doing is, along with our business, you know, the farm and the brewery, there's a historical house shot at by the British in 1777 next to the brewery. And it's been our idea and plan a while long to restore it, to bring it kind of back and kind of work it into the, to the business as sort of a tasting room, sort of a nice historical. It's got five fireplaces, really cool, kind of cool space. Quite possibly a couple rooms upstairs for an inn. And, you know, the downstairs just being sort of make believe you're in Napa Valley at a nice tasting room at a winery. You don't have to make believe, you can be in the Hudson Valley at a really nice place. And then, I don't know if anybody remembers, in 89, we lost our barn that was built in 1877. And we were trying to duplicate that as close to it as possible. It's outrageously expensive. We're going to do post and beam. And we're going to do all the cupolas and dormers and stuff like that, try to, you know, emulate what was there. We use that partially for a fruit stand, partially for historical display of agricultural equipment and stuff, and then use it for an event space, have it upstairs for sort of yoga or anything rented out, you know, in that respect. Downstairs will be barrel aging and storage of wine and hard cider. That's the basics, probably a whole lot more, but do you have any questions?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's awesome. I know the Chip family is always reinventing themselves, like most of the farmers, so thank you. Anybody else have any public comments on? No? Oh, Jerry's got something? Come on up, Jerry.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jerry Wine, and I am absolutely in favor of this project, and I'm helping out to try and get the grant. So I wanted to, just knowing the grant requirements, I wanted to make sure that at this hearing that we stated the square footage, because it has to be a matter of record. So I'm doing some dotting i's and crossing t's. Hopefully, I have this right. The, what they're going to call the deconstruction, which is like, for the, for the Halleck House, that's going to involve 3,200 square feet. And the reconstruction of the barn is going to be 12,204 square feet. And I wanted to make sure that was part of the record as it's a requirement. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Anybody else? Come on up. Mary Beth?
Good evening. My name's Mary Beth King. I live in Milton, and I would like to voice my support for the project. I'm just curious if you'll be able to retain some of the wooden structure, or will that need to be re-
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
A hundred percent of what's good is good.
Okay. And do you have any sense of what, how much of it is still good?
Most of it.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah.
There's a few spots that have now-
Have deteriorated, yeah.
Very, very, very good parts are still.
Oh, I wonder who that- Okay. And then where would the reconstructed, I don't know where that was, so where would that, where would that go? The barn?
To the north. There's a big foundation.
Oh, okay. Great. I think it's a great idea, and you have, I'm sure you have most everybody's full support. So thank you. And thank you for writing the grant.
Anybody else? Okay. So I do want to thank Rosemary and Jerry Wine for actually helping and promoting this grant for the town and for the Kent family. And Rosemary, you'd like to come up and say a few words, because without them, this wouldn't have gone forward. So I do really appreciate it. I know Chip and the family, I'm sure, really, really appreciate it. And we have a good relationship with the state and Monique and the granting committee, so I think we have a really good shot at this. So we'll see what happens.
Hi, Rosemary Wine. I just want to tell you what, because you'll see it in the notice, we have to put a notice now in the paper, I spoke to Colleen, that this was, public hearing happened. And these are definitions given by the Restore New York people. So when we say the Halleck, what I call the Halleck House, is a deconstruction, it is exactly what it says, shall mean the careful disassembly of a building of architectural or historic significance with the intent to rehabilitate it or reconstruct the building or salvage the disassembled material from the building for reuse. So that's why we're calling that a deconstruction. The barn is a reconstruction, because there's just a foundation there. And if you go behind the brewery and you walk toward the cold storage, you'll see it right there.
Thank you. See, without them, you know, we've got to have every box checked. These, the grants are very particular. If you don't have one thing right, your application will be thrown out. So very much appreciate your oversight on this, Rosemary, so appreciate it. I think we got everything set for the advertisement, and then our resolution is in place for tonight. So if anybody doesn't have any other public comments, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you. So now, we're going to move on to the first meeting of the month of the town board, May 13th, 2024. And I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Motion to approve the minutes, motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd, 2024 town board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd town board meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. And I need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd, 2024 public hearing of local law of the town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York, amendment chapter 155 zoning, article IX, section 155-41.1 of the Marlborough Town Code entitled Ridgeline and Steep Slope Protection.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. And I need authorization of payment of bills, and this is for $238,218.36. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Any comments on the agenda, specifically on the agenda? Anybody have any comments on the agenda? Pete?
When would a person in the audience have an opportunity to address the board?
To what?
To address the board.
Oh, at the end, we have public comments, so, yep. Okay, no, no comments on the agenda. Reports of department. Does anybody on the board have any objections to all the reports that were submitted to the town board? Any questions to anybody? I have the police here. Jerry wants to come up, because I know he has some good news for us tonight, so I was going to call him up. Does anybody have any questions for Tommy, Colleen, or Charlie, since they're in our audience? No? Okay, so Chief?
I just wanted to inform the board, in the fourth quarter of last year, I applied for a grant called the L E Tech Grant. Governor Hochul signed that grant. It's part of $127 million that she signed. 378 law enforcement's across the state of New York got that grant. Today, I was notified that we also received that grant. I put in for $100,000. We got $99,000 of it. So-
They couldn't give us that extra thousand.
So with that $99,000, we're going to look to increase our body cameras, in-car camera systems, LPRs, and a speed trailer.
Yep.
So that's what I specked out. So hopefully, we will be able to get all that. Of course, it was six months ago, so we'll see how much everything went up, but we should get most of it. So I just want to make all the board aware of that, that we got that, and I'm very excited.
Awesome job, Chief, as always. So very happy. I mean, you know, an extra $1,000, we'd have killed them, but $99,000 is an awesome job. And we thank the state of New York for having the grant opportunity, and I thank you for always looking out for grants. I don't know if everybody knows this, but the chief always is skimming through what's available out there, and he applies for everything. And typically, they're very good to police departments and fire departments and such, so if they're out there, you should apply for them, so, and we typically do. So great job, Chief, so. All right. So presentations, I don't have any presentations, but our old business is the community center update, Milton Landing project update. So I was gonna, I was going to talk about it, but I know everybody's sick of me talking, so I do have some pictures of what currently, what's going on up there. I don't know if it's going to come up on the screen properly, but we'll see if this works. So this is some, I just wanted to go over, so this is, it's going to be back and forth to some of the things that are going on. They're not in order, any in particular order. But this is the, the wall that was built. This is for two reasons. It's for the protection of the foundation, so people don't slam into it. And secondly, we're going to be planting planters inside behind there, between the wall and the brick, to make a nice decorative look. So this was all done by our highway department, just so you know. These guys have been getting skilled on building retention walls and all kinds of different things, and they've done a great job. This is what it looks like. If you haven't been down to the landing, as of this week, the blacktop went in. This shot here is pretty much where the new crossing went, and if we finally finalize it with CSX, and we are very close with it, but right in this area here is where the new crossing will go. Until that happens, this is going to be striped for parking right now. That was what's part of the plan. Landscaping started going in. So this was a blacktop that was also done at the community center. I don't know if you've gone by there, but the blacktop was also done there. They should be striping that by the end of this week, hopefully. This is the additional parking. This is where some handicap parking is going to be up front. Again, we're back down at the train station. We use the dock road cobblestone pavers to outline a lot of the surrounding areas for landscaping down here. And you can see right there in front of the train station, that's what you see for the planter beds. Now, we're back at the community center. These are the guys doing all the work. This is an overview of the train station overlooking the parking lot. So you could see to the left now, there's additional parking. There's 12 spots here now that were added. That's right there. This is the nice, I really like how this came out with the fencing. There's going to be additional fencing along the bridge area and fencing along the front edge here. That's going to be going next, this, end of this week or next week. And that's really the last thing that they're going to be doing. I don't know if you guys saw, but Councilman Zambito, with the help of the Bachi League, and Johnny Mack, and Mr. Pickin, and a bunch of other guys that were, are in the league, helped construct the new Bachi Court, because the league is expanding. And it's a league that Eddie started, so I want to thank Councilman Nellie, because this really took off in the last three years. And I think they're up to 25 teams, 26 teams now. So it's been very successful, and then we're expanding. And the league is actually fundraising internally themselves, and they're, and they're going to plan on building a pavilion over it. So that's what they're going to be doing. I don't know if you noticed, but probably haven't, because you haven't been able to go down there, but the North Pier Project also has started, the reconstruction of it. And our contractor that was hired in February, finally was down on the barge with his crane, and he deconstructed it. It's all removed. He'll be building the new wooden pier up on his site. I know we're going to have a little tour. We're going to go up there. The building department has to go up. I know myself, Chief, and Gary and John, we're going to have a whole, a bunch of us go up, and we'll see how they build it. And then he'll float it down on the barge, and he'll replace it back on top of the existing pillars. So it's pretty cool. And this is just some of the pictures of them removing it. How they could just have the cranes lift everything up. This is an overview picture. If you look down at the landing, with the blacktop in, again, some of these are repetitive. This is extra space that I asked our highway department to do for us. Again, you could see their nice brick wall work that they've built. This was going to be kind of dead space, I call it, down at the landing. And we took advantage of utilizing it, because we, we did lose quite a bit of parking, so this is going to help us with parking. Also, it's deep enough now, if the buses that come down can, need to back up in there or park there, they could park there, which will free up other parking and other spots for us. So, and also, if we have fire trucks that come down there, and they have to actually get across or park here and have hoses go across, now they have a space to park there as well. So that's the area right there. So it came out well. This padded area here is temporarily, right now, it's going to be, it's for bathroom facilities, but it's going to be porta potties for now. Eventually, we have plans of building two bathrooms here that will obviously connect to the sewer plant, which is right next to it. Again, you could see these guys do some good work, huh? And Dave did a lot of work with those rocks. I mean, I don't know, he was up there, what, two weeks, Dave? Something like that? But I just said, oh, Dave, can you just help dig out this thing a little? It's kind of flat here and everything. Before I knew it, it was like the Toshma Hall. So it, it looks awesome, though, you know? Here's the, I call it the raindrop. It's, this is where the buses are supposed to park along in this area here, and then they would wrap around here and come back around. So this kind of given dimension, or whatever you want to call it, that people have a way to wrap around and get out and in of the parking here. Before, it was just kind of open, and everybody parked wherever they wanted, so. Some of the planting, again, I got duplicates in here, so. This is our camera, Chief. I took some of these. So this is what it looks like from our cameras. Just so you know, we do have cameras down at the landing, and we do watch everything that goes on. So there's a nice picture, the overview of it. So as you can see, we're moving quite along on both our, all our projects at this point. I do really want to thank the highway department and John Alangi for allowing him to, a guy to come here, a guy to come there, as they're doing their normal, everyday work. You know, they're doing their everyday work, but they're also helping out the community at large. And, and I want to, want to thank Dave for also, he's always, no matter what I ask him, he stops what he's doing, and he comes down and does it. So we are trying to get everything done in the most economical way possible, but also make everything look very nice. And we want to give character to our town, and I think we're achieving that. So that's my overview of where we're at with those projects. So we're moving right along. And again, the community center, I'm pushing for the first week of June, and we're pretty much right there. So as long as I get my last chair delivery, which I'm waiting on, I mean, I do have the ones for the seniors, so they could actually move in, no problem. I want to thank Charlie, because he was able to get the, the water filtration put in there. So we have that all in there, the UV system, the saltwater system, because we have hard water. That was all put in this past week, and we're pretty much there. So hopefully, June. And as of this weekend, you're going to be having an art show down at the train station, so we cut it like right to the last week. I told Deputy Supervisor Appler to take down the barriers this afternoon, so people can go down there. So it's pretty much open down there as of right now, so. So you just made it, or we just made it. All right. New business. So next meeting, it falls on Memorial Day. The town hall and all its employees are not here. I need to ask the board to change the meeting to Tuesday the 28th, which I will not be here, but Deputy Supervisor Appler will be running the meeting. So is the Tuesday the 28th okay with everybody? Yes? So they just need a motion to change the meeting date to May 28th, Tuesday, for the second meeting in a month.
I'll make the motion to change the second meeting of May to Tuesday, May 28th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. I also got a request from the planning board, from the chairman, that they change the meeting from 7:30, which they currently have and has traditionally always been, to 7:00 PM. I said, I don't have a problem with it, but I will ask the board if they make a motion so we could make this permanent. So I just need a motion to change the planning board meetings from 7:30 to 7:00 PM.
I think that makes sense. It's easier if they're consistent with these meetings, anyway. So I'll make the motion to change the planning board meetings to 7:00 PM.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you. I also did get a request, I, I don't know why we didn't put it on here, but also from the planning board, also, they asked about our attorneys, and because we, right now, Megan left, which was the planning board attorney, both from Vanderwater. We use Vanderwater for our attorneys, and we use Vanderwater for planning board attorney and ZBA attorney. And Megan was doing the planning board, and Jerry Camados was doing the town board. Megan left, so Jerry's doing both boards. And they were asking if we thought it was a conflict of interest. I told them I did not think so, because in the past, we had Ron Blast, who did it for 20 years that way. He did the planning board, the ZBA, and the town board. There was a gentleman that came to the planning board that night they liked. I would just rather stick with what we have, because Jerry Wine, I mean Jerry Camados, knows all what's going on in the planning board at this point. I talked to Jerry Camados. He says he doesn't plan on doing it forever, because he doesn't want to do it forever, and he will get a replacement. So I'm going to make the recommendation back to Chris that we keep it as is, unless you guys have any objections to that.
Yeah.
Okay? All right. All right. So now I got correspondence, and I got a lot of them. Sorry. Well, you remember, it's been three weeks since our last meeting, because of how it skipped. So Supervisor Corcoran, Town Board, this letter is to commend the excellent work currently being performed by the town building department. Oh, look at this, Tom. They recently dealt with the building inspector, Tom Corcoran, and building secretary Penny Cashman, to obtain building permits for a new roof, new furnace, and central air conditioning system, and then close the deck. While initially, this seemed like a daunting task, I was pleased to find Mr. Corcoran and Ms. Cashman to be courteous, knowledgeable, and completely professional. Together, they made a complex process manageable and stress-free. As a result of their actions, I am confident that my home is not only in compliance with the town building code, but more importantly, completely safe for me and my family. I am grateful that the town has such impressive and dedicated public servants, and their actions reflect favorably on the ability of the town government to get things done quickly and efficiently. Yours truly, John Pariza. Good job, Tom. That was awesome. And Penny, you guys did a good job. I'm glad we get those once in a blue moon, so that's nice. This one says, this is from Kathy Sylvester. On as Supervisor Corcoran, Town Board, as residents of the town of Marlborough, I would like to ask that the line dancing program at the Cluett Shance Park be held this summer again. I spoke with Mr. Alexander, and he's interested in running the program again. It would be held every Monday evening from 7:00 to 9:00 from July 1st, 2024 through August 26th, 2024. I'm asking the town board to please waive the fees for the use of the pavilion. I would like to thank Supervisor Corcoran and the board for considering my request. Sincerely, Kathy Sylvester. So we've been doing this for a few years now, and Kathy and Mr. Alexander have been doing a great job. So I need a motion to waive the fees for the use of the pavilion from July 1st to August 26th. Yep.
Yeah, it's in there. It's in the book. Just awaiting approval.
I'm good with the fees. I'll make the motion to waive the fees for the line dancing.
Need a second? And all in favor? Aye, so move. Okay, this one is, good morning. My name is Jim O'Connell. I work for the New York State Agriculture and Markets in monitor Ulster County for spotted lanternflies, invasive insect which present in Milton Landing in the Cluett Shance Park. May I have permission to set up traps and remove life stage of SLF without pesticides at these parks? The traps are passive, no lures or pesticides. The life stage removal is physical control using a backpack vacuum cleaner for adults and scraping eggs masses. In both instances, I am not applying pesticides. So this is from the New York State Department of Agriculture. I talked to Jim, and I said, I don't really have an issue, but I want to make sure that the board is aware of this, and the board is okay with this. And we do have this issue going on. They actually had some of these set up down at the Milton Landing prior to this, and it worked pretty well. So they want to also extend that to the Cluett Shance Park, and this also obviously helps our farmers, because if these things get into the farms, they spread like wildflowers, and then there's- into the farms, they spread like wildflowers and then there's issues. So I just want to make sure you guys are right and I just need a motion to approve that the New York State Department Agriculture can set up these traps for the lanternflies.
Yes, I'll make the.
Oh, God, there you go. There you go.
I will make the motion to set up traps for the spotted lanternflies.
Good job. I need a second. All in favor? Aye. I'll let them know. Thank you, guys. Okay, this one is from Jerry Wine. The Marlboro Arts Coalition is on the schedule to use the Milton Landing train station on Saturday, May eighteenth, on Sunday, May nineteenth. Uh, and we're requesting that the Marlboro Town Board waive the fees associated with the use of the facility. Our insurance is compliant with town requirements and the certification is on file with the town clerk's office. Marlboro Arts Coalition is un- uh, unincorporated organization, not operated for profit, and we expect to incorporate and seek an IRS five oh one C three status later this year. Our mission is to serve local artists with exhibits and teaching opportunities and support the community and visitors with exhibitions and education. On the dates requested, uh, Marlboro Arts Coalition will be conducting our third annual open studio tour with fifteen artists this year. Several of those artists are unable to use personal studio space and would like to demonstrate the exhibits at the train station. Further to this request, it is, if the facility is available, we refer to set up on Friday evening and break down for Monday morning. Please consider this request at your earliest convenience and that's from Jerry Wine. So I need permission for us to waive the fees for the use of the train station for the Marlboro Arts Coalition for the date specified. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. There you go, Jer. You're all good. Guys, everybody's got something going on here. Says, would it be possible for the Lions Club to use the train station for our monthly meeting on Wednesday, July tenth from four thirty to eight thirty? Thanks in advance. All the best. Frank. Okay, Frank, uh, are we okay with waiving the fee for the Lions Club for July tenth from four thirty to eight thirty at the train station? Good? Make a motion.
I make a motion. Waive the fees for the train station for the Lions Club.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Thank you. And we got the Marlboro Football and Cheerleading Club. Supervisor and Town Board members, as a youth organization within the town of Marlboro, our number of registrations continue to grow and so does our need for additional fields at this time of the year. A field with lights would be helpful. Be assured our insurance is on file and will be, uh, advise all participants to respect the park rules. We would therefore ask for the use of the pavilion field with the lights and baseball fields? And the baseball fields? I don't know about the baseball. I know we always use the uh, soccer field section, but baseball field, I'd have to double check. Uh, beginning September thirtieth, uh, through November fifth, twenty twenty four, we would require the following time slots, Tuesday through Friday evenings, five thirty to eight PM. If you have any questions regarding the above required additional information or would require, uh, my assistance in whatever manner, please contact me. And that's from Thomas Corcoran Jr., Marlboro Youth Football and Cheerleader. The only thing, Tom, I think we just got to check on the baseball field use. I'm not sure if we did or not. But, uh, I think the, the pavilion soccer field area is open, so we did check that. So I'll make a, ask for a motion for the use for the Marlboro Youth Football and Cheerleading from September thirtieth through November fifteenth, uh, Tuesdays and Fridays, five thirty to eight at the Cluett Chance Park. If you're all right with that.
Yeah, I would imagine that the baseball league is going to need the baseball fields during
Yeah, that's right.
those months for the fall league. So, but I would make the motion for the soccer and pavilion area.
Okay. Need a second?
One second.
All in favor? Aye. Thanks. Yeah, we just got to check. I, I think they're probably using it, so.
Yeah.
Uh, oh boy, another one. To the Town Board of Marlboro, I would like to request Cluett Chance, uh, Park baseball fields Saturday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty three, from nine AM to eleven thirty AM. I would be holding the annual Carmen Strong softball tournament. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter. As always, the park is a great place and students, parents and alumni enjoy the day and also a day to remember one so strong. Thanks. Uh, Joanne Congeli. So this is on Ju- June fifteenth. There's nothing in there, right? Uh, Colleen, you guys check? That one's free? Okay. So it's nine AM to eleven thirty AM? Yeah. So I need a motion to allow um, them to have the Carmen Strong softball tournament on June fifteenth from nine to eleven thirty AM. Need a motion? I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Oh, hang on a second. There is something on the there's something on that date on the Marlboro Youth Baseball Calendar on Town Park Field One.
What time? Nine?
Nine. Can probably be moved, but.
Well, you get with them.
Yeah, I'm sure it could be moved, Col, but I think we have to try to at least connect those dots.
Okay, and then, uh, I just want to read. I finally did get back, um, the our planning board and the county. I actually just got the county planning boards on my desk today for the, uh, code change for the ridgeline. So I'll just read those quick. Get them in the record. Okay, this one is from the Marlboro Town Planning Board. The Town Board has asked the planning board to offer comments regarding the proposed amendment to the town's ridgeline and sleep slope protection provision. Copy annex. Uh, the board's note with appreciation the revisions made to the proposal law by the Town Board and requests the continued inclusive of dark sky compliance provisions and incorporation and uniform and compatible structure of color requirements. We also request that the lighting requirements delete the specific reference to bright LED lighting. After discussion on Monday evening, the planning board continues its suggestion that the fifty foot vertical buffer requirement for structure below the ridgeline be included. The planning board also discussed the anticipated report of the county planning department and the recommendation of the town CAC and scenic Hudson and request that the town board consider those suggestions favorably. During our review session, the subject of clear cutting was discussed and some linked and we suggest the limitation on it be incorporated in the amendment or elsewhere in the code. Looking to fur- uh, looking to further, we think that our comments to you on proposed zoning changes would be improved if the referrals included a brief discussion of how the proposed amendment will advance the goals of the town comprehensive plan. Finally, if the town board could include in its referrals a short statement of the goals with the proposed amendment will, uh, in advance, uh, that too would likely improve our ability to respond appropriately. Planning board very much appreciate the town's board request for our input respectfully. Chris Brand, Chairman. Tom, can you elaborate on the clearing part? Because we do have a clearing. We can, you're allowed to clear a certain amount of property, right? So when they're referring to some, some other section in the code, we already have that somewhere in the code, don't we? Now, in this instance where the applicant that came before the planning board, he cleared space that shouldn't have been cleared. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Right? So I don't know if that's what they're referring to, but, um, we do have in our code already that you can clear up to basically a half an acre, so. Anyway. Well, we'll get to it after. I'm going to read all our comments. You could talk in the public comment. All right, Joe? Uh, Ulster County Planning Board. Uh, the town, this is summary, town proposes update the one fifty five dash forty one point one ridgeline and sleep zone protection zoning, which applies to town adopted ridgeline protection map. Material submitted for review. Referral form draft local law resolution, full EAF uh, cover sheet, previous referral matters, uh, refer to number two oh two four dash twelve. Recommendations, ridgelines and sleep zone protection. The town draft amended to one fifty five point four one point one F four removes the restrictions on structures being allowed closer than fifty feet and ev- elevations to the ridgeline and the restrictions on disturbance within the fifty foot area except for driveways when they cannot be located outside the fifty foot area. The proposed updated amendment also removes the review function from the planning board granting it un- it instead to the town code enforcement officer and applies to the law so that no proposed building or structure extends above the highest elevation of the Marlboro ridgeline. No purpose of or explanation was provided for this law that demonstrates how these changes are consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. It is also unclear why and for what reason only this portion of the town's zoning status has been removed from the purpose of the town's planning board. Furthermore, restriction in structures and buildings from only the highest elevation does not account for visual impacts elsewhere and does not consider the context of the area where the proposed within the ridgeline protection area is being made. The Ulster County Planning Board does however agree that the requirements of the topographic survey limitations of materials and lighting as found in C, D and E of the proposal are worthwhile additions to the current sleep slope regulations. Uh, the US Ulster County Plan Board recommends the amendment of one fifty five dash forty one F four including paragraph B be disapproved as currently proposed. Uh, the limitations on color and building materials, lighting requirements and the provided of topographic survey would be a welcome addition to the section. And that's, uh, Robert Bieberwitz, that's the principal planner for the Ulster County Planning Board. And that's all my correspondence, everyone. That's it. So that's not bad. All right. Now. Now the time, Pete. Public comments. Come on up. Peter was first because he asked first originally. All right, Joe? All right. We hope so.
My name's Peter Hoffman. I live in Marlboro. And I would like to address the board about what I see as a growing traffic problem on Roseoff Hill.
I'm here. I'm sorry. Roseoff Hill, yeah.
The northbound traffic on that hill, once you pass CBS is constantly jockeying to be one up on all of the, you know, anybody ahead of it. If they run up to somebody that's turning left into McLaughlin, McLaughlin, they'll immediately veer to the right, cutting off traffic in the slower lane. It's gotten to the point where I've instructed my wife, I'm sorry, and I do this myself. If I, once I get past the last uh, residents on Roseoff Hill where the three lanes are converging to two, I duck into the shoulder to make a right turn. You have to or you'll be run off the road. If you stay in that le- in the main lane, you'll never be able to make that turn. You'll be chased right up the hill. I just found out recently and maybe you can confirm this, that it's illegal to turn onto the shoulder to make a right turn. Well, that's not very good.
Well, you just perjured yourself.
The other problem and which I see as a greater problem is coming southbound. If you want to make a left turn into Hudson Bluff coming southbound, you want to make sure there's no traffic behind you for a half a mile because they'll buzz by you on the shoulder near the ditch. If they're coming at full speed and you see them coming at full speed, you turn, you turn, so they'll often go down to CBS and do a U-turn. It's, it's a bad situation. I know you as a board can't do anything about DOT but what I'm asking is could you possibly approach DOT about maybe that
Pete, it's funny you're up here, Pete, because I've already had DOT there two weeks ago in the exact spot.
For the same.
I, I, I have the, I have the same fears as you for many, many years and I had DOT there. I had DOT down here multiple times in the last month. Jerry knows about it. I actually was in DOT's office in Poughkeepsie today for two hours about Route nine W. So I'm very well aware of what's going on there and I could tell you what DOT said about that section. You could apply for a permit and you could possibly put a turning lanes in. You could possibly do things. I said, well, what would that cost if I actually had to do it? And this would be the taxpayers of Marlboro would have to pay for it. DOT doesn't pay for it. He said roughly eight hundred to a million dollars to put in turning lanes and do the study and do the engineering. So basic, and DOT won't do anything anymore. They don't fund it. They'll give you a permit. But you have to first out, first off, I'd have to go and, you know, obviously get all the engineering completed. Then I would obviously have to apply for a grant because I don't think I could swing a million dollars to do that. And that's only on one section of nine W. Now I'm talking, I, I, because we've had accidents. We just had a recent accident again by Chestnut Lane. A very bad accident. We had a fatality at the Falcons. Um, we had one fatality at, by the Youngs Park. So I've had them down here multiple times and every single time I've told them, they said they cannot do anything because it doesn't meet their guidelines on every single one. They did say you could apply for a permit. That's their answer to everything. We could apply for a permit. You could get an engineering plan. You could submit an engineering plan. We will look at it. If it meets our criteria, we might approve your permit, might approve your permit. And then you could go out for bid and you could do it. So this is what we're dealing with. I, I, I know your fear because that's one of my biggest fears. Like, I go up Chestnut Lane but where my road is and every day I fear for my life making that turn. Um, because people are coming fifty five, sixty miles an hour. One guy sees me, there's a guy behind him, he sweeps over and another guy doesn't. So when I sit, when I sit there, I don't have my foot on the brake all the way. I have my foot on the gas almost. So if I see them coming, I take off. So it's the same thing going south. So I, I get it and we're, we're still looking at it now.
Would it help if there was a concerted effort of the community
Sure.
to write to the transportation department about how unsafe.
It would, it would, it would help, but I know they'll get you the same answer because when the, the unfortunate accident happened at Youngs Field, there was tons of letters written to DOT. And it all fell on deaf ears because they said, okay, we'll give you a permit. Do the engineering, put it out for bid. So I mean, I'm not saying they won't let us put a turning lane in all these places. It's just the cost of putting the turning lanes in there. And then I have, you have to do the engineering upfront, right? You know that, right? Then I have to see what the cost is and then we kind of, they kind of know what the costs are. Because when you're dealing with DOT, right, you get, now they got to review it. You got to pay for their engineers to review it, even though you just paid your own engineer to do it. Then you got to have their flagmen, their foremen, their guys on the job watching everything you do on top of the guys you're already paying to do the job. So it becomes these eight hundred thousand, one million dollar jobs, you know, and I argued there was a huge study done, you know, uh, five years ago and it took about two years to complete. It was submitted. They knew it and they came down, they re-black top nine W and they barely did any of it. Right? That was the opportunity to do it. And they didn't do it. So that just tells you that they don't care, in my opinion, right? That's just the way I look at it. They don't care because they had the study, they knew it had to be done. They had five of their own guys on that committee. Um, and today the guy was arguing with me, you know, he doesn't argue with me. He's, he's doing his job, right? He says, it's not as easy as just, because I said, look, we have four lanes or we have three lanes. It, why, why can't we make one of them? Why can't we make one of them a turning lane? It's easy, just restripe it. And he's like, well, it's not as easy as just restriping because you, then you got to deal with the pitch because with plowing and off running and stuff like, I'm like, well, you plow it now the way it is, right? So I don't, I don't understand that part of it. I'm not an engineer, right? You're an engineer. So I argued again with them today. And today's meeting was about Dockside project coming up and by the Falcon and using Dock Road and how they're going to enter and exit, and it's going to be a huge traffic issue. We know it, right? I know it's going to be it. And so we're kind of trying to get ahead of the game before they build the project to come up with a solution. And this, you know, they're, they're requesting that the developer put in a left-hand turning lane going north to south there. And they're arguing there's not enough room. And I said, well, there was enough room to put a turning lane at the school, and it's the same distance, same width, so why can't you put one? Oh, it's a cost. And the, and the lady that was representing Dockside asked DOT the question, well, what do you think the cost is to put in that turning lane? And guess what the answer was? $800,000. So it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy. But I, I do hear you, understand we are still looking at it, and I'm going to continue to look at it.
I, I never even got to the school buses, but you can see that there's a problem there, and it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, it's, I think the whole 9W corridor's got to be addressed. It's not just that. At one point, they were talking about taking 9W and putting it all back to one lane each way, and that way they can create these turning lanes in some of these areas. That went out the window. They, again, they came down and I, I call it putting lipstick on a pig, right? You just repaved over what you had and you kind of striped it the way it was, and you did a couple little improvements, but you didn't do a majority of them.
Okay, well, I appreciate the time you've given.
No, no problem.
Just a follow-up. DOT is more concerned about moving traffic than they are speeds at which they would ask to lower the speeds on 9W. That was supported by the stud that people participated in for over two years. They were more concerned about moving the volume of traffic rather than its speed. They said, does it clog up volume too much in order to bring speed in the town of 45? However, I did think it was a good idea to apply lanes on 9W. How did it do?
Well, they were thinking about doing it. Well, I even offered to pay for the sign to reduce. I said, the town of Marlborough will pay for the sign to reduce the speed. I said, because right here, you still have it at 55. I said, going into the hamlet. I said, but the town of Marl, the hamlet of Marlborough, you have it 35, 40, right?
Thirty.
So, so I said, why is it up here in, in this hamlet, 55, over there, it's 35? I said, I'll pay for the sign. Can you, can we change it, right? Nope. Like Jerry said, they want the through traffic and...
So Scott, it, it goes much deeper than that. Just like Jerry said, I'm going to reiterate, the DOT, the Department of Transportation, will do nothing to slow the flow of traffic. If you don't already have a road cut on a vacant lot going on in 9W right now, you're hard pressed to even get an approval on it. Perfect example is the building that's going in across from Ship Lantern Inn. They would not allow them to do a road cut on a 9W. If you have access onto an additional town road other than 9W to get out onto 9W, that's your option. There's no negotiation. They will not do it. So, and like Jerry said, stupidly, a couple of years ago, they were literally going to put bike lanes along 9W. We fought it, we gave them our suggestions, which means nothing. They're going to do what they want to do. Just somebody on there decided, you know, maybe it's not a good idea to put bike lanes on. It was, it was, we could take no credit for it because they, they listen to nothing that we say. It's ironic that you're, I know you live by the Tom Vak building in the community center, and, and I understand that's probably why it's your concern. You have family going in and out of there. We're all concerned about it, but, but let's face reality, there is not a safe area on 9W to make a turn. I don't care where you're talking about. I wouldn't make, I wouldn't make a turn going northbound onto Old Indian Road if you paid me. It's, it's one of the most dangerous intersections going, and, and we see accidents there all the time, and unfortunately, it's not going to be the last time we see them. Chestnut Lane, we just had one there just recently. I mean, it, it's horrible, and unfortunately, DOT doesn't care. Like Scott said, how many fatalities are we going to have before they, before they get off their proverbial ass and do something? They're not. They're not going to. They have a formula. I don't know what the formula is. Maybe you got to have three consecutive deaths in a certain amount of time. If you don't meet that criteria, they're doing nothing.
Well, again, thank you for your time.
No, thank you for, I mean, bringing it up. And if you, you guys, if you want to start some kind of petition or letter writing to DOT, you know, I'd be all for it, and I'll, I'll hand-bring them to them. I mean, I, I know Lee pretty good now. I, I talk to him every couple of weeks. I, but I get no all the time, but I call him every couple of weeks and, but they did come down here, I'll give them that, they, they came down here, they had, they bring down four or five people, and they do look at...
Yeah, they get to lunch.
Yeah, they get, they get to see everything, but, you know? I mean, out of the Falcon, I am going to get, Central Hudson was very cooperative. I did, I mean, we're going to brighten that area up, so we are getting lights, more bright lights there, but they've been pretty good, but...
Thank you very much.
So, thanks, Peter.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Peter. All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any public comments? Well, whoever wants to come up first.
First question.
Go ahead.
Would you repeat the sentence in the town planning for the 54th step asset on the 31?
About the which one, Joe?
54th step.
About what section?
The sentence in reference to that 50-foot...
The 50-foot?
We can stop it.
Uh, after discussing on Mondays, even the planning board continues to suggest that the 50-foot vertical buffer requirements for structures below the ridgeline be included.
Thank you.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Do you want to get a beer?
Come on up, Mary Ann.
Mickey, you're already done. You're already done. You already won.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi, Scott. Mary Ann Quick, Old Indian Trail, Hilton. Okay. Thank you for your email with the plans for the, for the trail. I was hoping that we could finally meet personally so that we could eliminate all of this back and forth at this meeting, but please know that I would still like to meet with you personally if you would give me that courtesy.
We're up there today. I was waiting to see if you come out.
Oh, personally, not, not in the public forum. Couple of questions about what you sent me. Is all of the work that's being done on the trail, is it all being done on the east side?
Uh, well, we're going to have, we might, we're probably going to have to go into the right of way of Cent, the, on the west side.
Central Hudson?
Yeah. Central Hudson was able, I was able to talk to Central Hudson, and they were able to give us their, the use of the west side.
Is that six feet or 12?
Well, we could go up to 10 feet into that bank. So today, when we were up there, we were trying to measure it out. I had a, a core drilling company up there.
Right, I was going to add, that's my next question.
For the core drilling, and originally, we thought we were going to, if we could do this, right? If, this is the plan we're going with, which I hope this is the one, uh, they were going to use six core drilling holes, but we think we need to have nine core drilling holes. This is on the east side, and this is to stabilize that side of the road, and from there, you would, once you drill, that's 27-foot holes that are drilled, and then the stabilizing rods get screwed into that. These are four-inch holes.
Okay.
And then one foot above the ground, these rods stick up, one foot above the ground. From there, you'd have to pour your, it's like a footing.
Yeah.
Like a, like you're building a house.
Yeah.
You connect your rebar and everything for the cement to those nine drilled holes, cordhill holes, and then you would, then after that dries, then you would build a, I think it's a three-foot retaining wall on top of that. And then we would, you know, obviously, we're going to try to push 10 feet into that side of the building, so we're trying to push that east side wall as far over as we can so we're not hanging off the side of a cliff, right?
Okay.
Because it's going to make pouring that cement and that footing and everything else that much more expensive. So we think if we could, you know, get 10 feet over to the west, we can pull that in pretty close to where the edge of the road is right now, and it should work. I've asked the highway department if they could possibly start going up there and clearing that west side of the road to see what kind of materials in there. We know at your corner of your lot, we have that big rock that we talked about originally. That's going to be the first spot we're going to look at ripping.
They did take down a lot of the branches. That was Central Hudson's...
Yeah, Central Hudson came in. I asked them to cut a lot of trees down before we do anything, which they did last week.
Yeah, they did. They did a great job.
Yeah, so once they did that, then I had set up this meeting with our engineers to come up with the core drilling company, and that's what we did today.
All right, so that was my, my next question. You did meet with the core drilling people.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, is GPI involved in fix, fixing, repairing this road? Are the core drilling people going to do it if they're not doing it? Or GPI, who's doing it?
GPI is the engineering firm, that engineering at all. They're doing the specs of what has to be done.
Yeah.
The drilling company would be a private entity drilling it, putting the cores in, and then we'd have to, either we, which I don't think we can do, I, we're going to probably have to hire someone to build that retention wall, and then, but we will probably do all the digging for the west side. That's where, that's where we're going to look at doing to try to save as much, but I don't feel comfortable that much having our guys close to that side of that cliff, right?
So it's, so it's, so it's a combination. It's the GPI, the core drilling people, the town, and someone else possibly or probably?
Yeah, it's probably going to be some kind of a, I have to, you know, I have to go get estimates, but it's going to be some kind of a foundation or cement company that puts in foundations. It's similar to a foundation wall.
Okay, so that's the next question. Does that have to go out for public bid? Because now we're talking more time.
No, because it's going to be on, I, I'm, from the estimate, I'm hoping it's going to be under a certain amount of money, and I should be able to just get three estimates.
Okay, but not public bid?
No, no.
Okay. Do you have any idea as to the starting date?
Well, I told John to get up there tomorrow.
Okay, that's close enough.
I don't know if that's actually going to, I mean, Dave was there, right, Dave? I mean, Dave's going to help out too as much as he can, but I got to, you know, the guys are crazy too, but I, you know, I did say, look, I want, I would like to have you up there tomorrow, starting to dig this out.
We're going to start digging, but just so you know, Mary, it, we're starting at your driveway where the, where the shale outcrop is.
That big rock.
We're going to start there and go to the limit that we can legally.
I understand.
And, and then go from there. And then after that's done, the core drilling guy hopefully will be able to access and get his machine in there.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying.
In any way, in any way that we can help or facilitate things for you, please let us know.
We appreciate that.
Okay, certainly.
Well, you know, just so you know, you know I've been trying to get GPI to get me this plan.
I know, I know, I know.
You know how I got him to get me the plan?
Yeah.
Dave knows, and you guys know how I got him to get the plan. What did I tell him?
What do you mean?
I said, either you get me the plan by the end of the week or you're fired.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, God, don't fire anybody else.
And then that's, but matter, I said, I want a plan on my desk by the end of the week or you're not only losing this job, you're losing the highway department job, you're losing all your job.
Okay, good.
And then two days, I had a plan on my desk.
Good, good.
So sometimes you got to do, I, I don't like doing that, but the thing is, I, I don't know what it is today. I've talked to this to Jerry quite a bit. I can't get professionals to do their job. I don't understand what it is. Engineers, attorneys, anybody.
Well, it's not, it's not just Ulster that has that problem. It's across the board.
I talked to all the supervisors. They all have the same problem.
I understand.
And it's just, I don't know what's going on today, and what's happening is, in my opinion, is there's a lot of people that have been there for a long time, 30-plus years in these, in these jobs, and they can't get people to replace them.
They're tired.
So what's happening is they're trying to take on all the jobs themselves, and they're stretched, and something that usually takes maybe a month to get back, you're taking three, four, or five months to get back because they're trying to do all these jobs with one person.
I understand.
I mean, I have the same issues going on with the, at the, the transfer station we have an issue with. It's been months. The sewer plant that I'm trying to get upgraded, Mr. Larios, I call him every week, every week. I said, I have $2 million in grant money to spend. It's been two years. I need to get this done.
It's a disgrace. I'm sorry to say.
So I'm just telling you, it's not just you, and I apologize for all this, but we have been trying. It's very difficult, but I think we finally got something in place. I'm hoping to get a good price from this person that came up today. Sounded very good. Doesn't mean it's going to be, but...
All right.
But we, you should hopefully see the guys, if they have time, they're going to start kind of weeding out that west side.
I got it. One last question, please. Will Old Indian Trail still be a two-way, or what will we do in terms of that?
Well, it's, it's north and south. I mean, we know it's, it probably shouldn't be a two-way because it's, you can only fit one car on there, right? It really should be a one-way road.
Yeah. Will you consider that?
I would love to make it a one-way road again because I don't think it should be a two-way road. It's 11-foot wide.
It's too dangerous.
It's not even up to code. It's 11-foot wide.
Scott, there's an area that's only nine feet wide. Our engineer figured that one out, nine feet.
It's, it should not be a two-way road. Hey, if you're, if you're open to that, trust me, I'll put, I'll, I'll ask the board and figure out how we could put it back to one way.
You're open to keeping it a one-way?
I'm sorry?
You, you want to keep it a one-way?
Yeah, I'd like it to be a one-way.
You would? Well, I mean, it's almost...
Yeah, because it...
But one way, they got changed to...
Why did it get changed to a two-way?
I don't want to speak for anybody, but I thought it...
That's, so did I. That's why I'm asking.
No, we did not. No, we did not. We didn't have...
I've had the impression all my life.
So, so was I.
My involvement, Mrs. ...
Hey.
It was changed.
That's good news to me, Mary Ann.
No, that's great news because I was under that assumption also.
Huh? Sorry, what? What'd you say?
We were all under the assumption that, that you requested it to be a two-way.
No.
That's what we had heard. Okay.
I don't, if you, if you look at our correspondence over the past year, from our attorney as well as ourselves...
That makes, that makes our decision much easier.
Yeah.
And which way?
Well, probably from the north coming in.
Okay, it's south. So if you, you go...
What's so funny? Do you, no, I'm talking to that gentleman. Do you live there? Do you know what we've gone through?
I've been on that road. I used to plow that road.
I don't care if you've been on the road. We live on that road.
Well, there's the guy to ask right there. Charlie used to do it.
Well, I'll, I'll talk, I mean, I don't wanna, I'll talk to John about that. We'll figure that out.
I don't wanna get into controversy here. Listen, I've had enough aggravation for the whole year.
I just wanna first get it fixed. That's the big thing. I mean, and I think we're on a path, hopefully, that we're there. Um, that we have a plan that is economical and sensible and we can do it.
Thank you.
And that's, that's what we've been aiming to get done. So I think we're, we're there.
We're close. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Uh, anybody else have any public comments? Mickey?
I'll make it as fast as I can. If I understood correctly, the Ulster County Planning Board also recommended to keep the 50-foot restriction on the ridgeline, if I understood that letter correctly.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, um, I, since it wasn't on the agenda, I was gonna be asking about the ridgeline protection law. I'm assuming that the attorneys are still working on it and that it will be coming up again.
We'll get to it. Told you before, I'm not in no rush.
I'm not in a rush either. I just wanted to point out that, um, I do see that there's, that you're going to be retaining counsel on a property that is affected by the ridgeline, which that's on the agenda for tonight.
Possibly.
And, um, possibly. But keeping that 50-foot, I think strengthens the town's position on that. So as a spokesperson also for the CAC, I once again ask that you keep the 50-foot, um, restriction in the proposed code.
Well, if I'm gonna leave the 50-foot rule, then why am I bother doing anything for the last six months?
This is a question that only the board can answer. It's a good code.
And we answered it multiple times. So if you have any other questions, let's move on to something else. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but what did I say wrong?
I'm just saying, come on. I've answered 100 questions about the ridgeline. So go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm concurring with the planning board, the town planning board, and the Ulster County Planning Board.
Let's move on.
Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any public comments? Come on up, Jerry.
Yes. Uh, I wanted to let you know, let everybody know, I think you already do know that, um, the Marlboro Arts Coalition has been awarded a $5,000 grant from Artisan Hudson.
Yep.
Called the Apple Parade Project. And this project is gonna deploy apples around Marlboro, where it may be about so big. Um, I'd like to come on that. Uh, we applied for the grant with the support of the town and the endorsement. And thank you very, very much for that, as well as, um, we got support as a community partner from the Friends of the Milton Landing and Gail Adler. So, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Another grant. All right, anybody else? All right. Then we're gonna move on to resolutions. All right. So Resolution 50, to award the fuel items supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas a legal notice appeared in the official newspaper for the town of Marlboro. Fuel needs requesting rebids for the items that were not awarded. And whereas May 3rd, 2024, all bids were opened and read aloud, now therefore it be resolved that the following bids are awarded. Item number one, propane, uh, Russo fuel and propane, 40 cents per gallon over Selkirk. All propane and Clue at Chance Park will be donated. Item number two, unleaded gasoline, regular 87-octane Russo fuel and propane is 50 cents a gallon over the average of the posted rack price for unbranded ethanol gasoline for Albany, New York. Item number four, unleaded gasoline, mid-grade 89-octane Russo fuel and propane, 50 cents a gallon over the average of, uh, posted rack price for unbranded ethanol gasoline for Albany, New York. Item number five, unleaded gasoline, premium 93-octane, 50 cents a gallon over the average posted rack price for unbranded ethanol gasoline for Albany, New York, and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Mullinelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman Zambito.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes. We're gonna have to share, Sharon. I don't know. Uh, Resolution 51, to approve, uh, commencement of an injunction of action of Ulster County Supreme Court. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the town board of town of Marlboro has been advised by the building inspector that Steve Santini and Carolyn Santini owners of 219-29 Mount Zion Road, Town of Marlboro, New York, section, block, and lot number 102.3-3-15. The premises violated Town Code Section 155-41.1C, 135-4A, 155-41F4, and 155-41F4A. Whereas the town board has been requested to approve the commencement of the injunction action of Ulster County Supreme Court to enforce the Town of Marlboro Town Code as against the premises owner of the action. And whereas the town board of Town of Marlboro finds that it is the best interest of the town retaining legal services for Vanderwater-Vanderwater LLP to provide legal advice and litigation services for the actions at the rate of $295 per hour plus disbursements. Now therefore it be resolved, the town board approves or ratifies commencement of an action to enjoy code violations by Steve Santini and Carolyn Santini owners of 219-29 Mount Zion Road, Town of Marlboro, New York, and be further resolved, the town board advise supervisor retain Vanderwater and Vanderwater LLP to provide legal advice, uh, legal services for this action. And before we vote on this, I just wanna let the board know what I'm, uh, really wanting to do here is to, at this point, we're gonna, I wanna ask the board to retain Vanderwater and Vanderwater for this request. I do not wanna move on to the Supreme Court at this time. And I, I say that because at this point, uh, there has not been any further code violations, um, by the applicant. But we have been watching that site very closely. Um, and if we do see further violations, then I would, do wanna go to the Supreme Court and I do wanna take action. Um, and the reason I say this because this action will eventually cost the town taxpayers $10,000 to do this. Um, so if there isn't any further code violations, and at this point, those violations have been written up. They've been, uh, addressed as best we can. Um, I don't wanna spend the $10,000 if we don't have to. But I do wanna retain Vanderwater and Vanderwater, um, in case we do decide to move on. So that's what I'm asking for here. So, um, that's what we're voting on.
Scott, the only thing we talked about was.
Hold on.
The restorer, what he already cut down?
The restoration of what he cut down is gonna be, is gonna be something he's gonna have to, uh, you know. Yeah, he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to be responsible to replant trees that he wasn't supposed to cut down. Absolutely.
Okay.
Is the address for those three properties are being subdivided? Is the address correct?
The section block numbers you're saying, Joan? Is that what you're saying?
No, the address, um, is 219-229 Mount Zion Road.
Well, that's what we have. Yeah, I believe.
What was the three properties?
219 and 229 Mount Zion Road in New York.
219 and 229.
And then we got the section block number, 102.3.1. That's the section and block numbers. Yeah.
Because there's, the other two residences are separate properties.
So that, that's what I'm asking the board for here. I'm not saying when I'm gonna move forward with this as of yet. And I would ask the board again if we do wanna move forward this, but I wanna retain Vanderwater and Vanderwater for this purpose. Um, and the gentleman we used last time, because I, I know the board is well aware, but I don't know if the public is well aware, that we already been through this procedure with the same applicant, and we did go to the Supreme Court, and we did get a violation. And we did stop him from doing it, and I would assume that would have stopped him from doing other things. But obviously, it didn't. But at this point, I would not wanna spend another 10 grand if we don't have to. But I wanna have that option. So that's what I'm asking. So having said that, unless you have more questions on that, anybody? Then moves for its adoption.
Scott, I just, an addendum, one, one sentence. The, the road would be a one-way coming up because that's the way our driveway faces. Our driveway faces.
And we're talking about something else here. You threw me off because I thought you were talking about this.
Well, I'm sorry. That's the way our driveway goes. Our driveway is designed to go.
Yeah, I'll talk to John about that. Yeah.
And now we have to do that three-point turn.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Yeah.
But on this, would you, uh, or could you put in a settlement if you moved forward with the town would be?
You can't. You're not allowed to get reimbursed for these. I, I tried that last time. Trust me. Because in my opinion is if, if you were able to get reimbursed for these, I think people would think twice about breaking our laws, right? Right? Right now, there's, it's almost no consequences, right? We could write violations. We could try to bring you to our local court. They'll give you 30 days. They'll give you 60 days to remedy the situation. The only remedy is to get an injunction by the Supreme Court, which costs us a lot of money. And at the end of the day, we know we're gonna win because you broke our codes. There's no if, ands, or buts. But we still gotta spend the money, right? And there is no reimbursement for legal fees. So I did try that last time. So that's why I'm being a little hesitant this time. So, but I do wanna have that option. So, okay? All right, Colley.
Okay. Councilman Mullinelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Uh, well, I understand the proactivity here. I would, I would prefer to retain the legal services when the time comes. So, no.
Okay, good.
Councilman Zambito.
Uh, I also would vote no.
Supervisor Corcoran.
I'll vote. Well, it's gonna be two, two if I vote yes. So if I vote yes, it's a, no, no, we don't pass. So I'll vote yes, but that means it don't pass. So, uh, that's okay too. All right? And then, uh, I will talk to Kyle tomorrow, who was our, I mean, we already have Vanderwater-Vanderwater for our attorneys. But Kyle is the gentleman from Vanderwater, and Vanderwater that takes care of this. And I'll tell him what happened and see if there's anything he could do other than going to the Supreme Court up to this point. So I think Eddie had a very good point, which I think, um, is there a way to force, and I don't know if you know this, Tom, is there a way to force Mr. Santini to replant trees that were taken down illegally? That weren't supposed to be taken down at the top part of the ridge?
Yeah, Supreme Court.
And it's the Supreme Court, right? So that's what I'm gonna ask Kyle, and he's probably, that's what he's gonna tell me. So, okay. I mean, that could be part of the injunction, right? So that's, uh, something that we could get out of him. All right. I will follow up with the board on that. All right? Uh, Resolution 52, to authorize the supervisor sign the agreement, uh, with Mr. Maza. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the owners of tax parcel 108.4-6-5.1 has applied for approval of subdivision of lot line realignment affecting the property. And a connecting therewith was applied with variance from the zoning board. And whereas while making such application, it has been determined that the portion of the existing garage proposed lot on the property is located within the encroachments upon the Dragoda Road and Town Road. Uh, if people aren't aware of the Dragoda Road up there, there is a, we have a road that goes there, the Dragoda Road. It's not as wide as the, the right-of-way that we have through their property. The right-of-way that we have for the road, if we ever wanted to make it wider, there is an existing garage. Part of the existing garage is in that right-of-way. Um, so what happened is, we don't wanna take liability. God forbid somebody goes off the road, hits the structure. It's now actually technically on our property. So who do they sue? Do they sue us or do they sue them? So there's an agreement that we put in place here that the owner of that structure is taking sole responsibility in ownership of that property. If there was ever being sued, they would be the ones that would take on all the liability. Um, also, if for any reason the town decides to widen the road to that width, they would have to be required to remove that part of the structure. So that's what this agreement is for. Uh, whereas, whereas while making such application, it has been determined that the portion of the existing garage on the proposed lot of property is located within the encroachments of the Dragoda Road and Town Road. And whereas the owners have asked the town for permission to allow the garage to remain in its present location. And whereas the town has agreed to grant such permission, subject to terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, be resolved, the town board of Town of Marlboro hereby authorize the town supervisor to sign the agreement with Mr. Maza and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Mullinelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman Zambito.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes. Thank you. All right. This is the next one. Resolution number 53, authorize Greenman Peterson to publicly bid Young's Park Sports Field Lighting. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the Town of Marlboro received a grant from Ulster County under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA of 2021 Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, the SLFRF. And whereas the scope of the work has been prepared by Greenman Peterson, Inc. And whereas the town board of Town of Marlboro authorized Greenman Peterson, Inc. to publicly bid the Young's Park Field Lighting. And now therefore it be resolved that the bidding documents may be obtained electronically from the bid net and in person at the Town of Marlboro office of the clerk, 21 Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, 12547. And now therefore it be resolved that the bids receive will be opened and read aloud at the Town Hall, 21 Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, 12547, on June 8th, 2024, at 11:30 a.m., and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Mullinelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman Zambito.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes. Thank you. And here's the big one, Mr. Kent. Resolution number 54, to authorize the Town of Marlboro to sponsor an application for a grant from the Restore New York Communities Initiative 2024 Round Eight for Restoration of Kent Farm. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the Town Board of Town of Marlboro has received a request from OP Kent &amp; Sons to sponsor the application for funding from the Empire State Development Corporation, ESDC, under the Restore New York Communities Initiative to finance and rehabilitation of the Kent Farm. And whereas OP Kent &amp; Sons proposes the use, the funds to convert the historic home into an event space, side area tasting room, and farm-to-table restaurant into rebuild and restore a barn as a farm store, museum, and event venue showcasing New York state produce and historic farm artifacts on the Kent Farm properly located at 160-162 North Road, Milton, New York, 12547. And whereas OP Kent &amp; Sons shall request financial assistance from ESDC in the amount of $1,500,000. And whereas the town board finds that this project is consistent with all existing local plans, the proposed financing is appropriate for the project. The project will facilitate effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources so that promote both economic development and pers- preservation of community resources. And the project develop and enhances infrastructure and/or facilities in the manner that will attract, create, and sustain employment opportunities in the Town of Marlboro. Now therefore it be resolved, the town board hereby supports and will sponsor an application for the Restore New York funding for Kent Farm, and will administer the grant in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations established by EDSC. And be it further resolved that the implementation of the resolution does not commit the Town of Marlboro to any particular course of action, and is therefore a planning initiative which is a type-two action under SECR. And be it further resolved, the town board of the Town of Marlboro does hereby authorize a supervisor or designated town representative to execute the applications and other agreements or documents required by EDSC for grant funding that results from the application. As in, A's, can you call the board there?
Councilman Mullinelli.
Yes, and good luck.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman Zambito.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes, thank you. Okay. And at this time, it is 8:28. Ed?
I think it's time for New Germany.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you, everybody.